Okay, folks, well, it's seven o'clock. It's Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, and we're in the council chambers in the city of Platteville, and I hereby call this meeting to... Roll call.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Stock... excuse me, Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Very good. The very first thing on our agenda tonight is a special presentation from Southwest Wisconsin Technical College, and I believe we have President Jason Wood to start that presentation, so we'll invite you and any and all of your team to the podium.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the council, thank you for hosting us tonight. True to academic tradition, we will start with a pre-test. The lecture will be 50 minutes, and then we'll have a post-test. No, we'll try and respect your time and take about 10 or 15 minutes tonight to talk about Southwest Tech's economic impact. I'm fortunate to have Jen Taylor and Bree Williamson with us tonight. Bree's one of our recruiters, and Jen is in our admissions office. My name's Jason, and I live here in Platteville as well, so I'm interested in and appreciative of what you do as a council for the city. So as you look through this quiz, I will collect them at the end primarily because of the last question, but as we go through our presentation, we'll walk through the answers in case you want to take some more time to answer each of those questions. They will pop up. How many people do we have here tonight that graduated from Southwest Tech? Any graduates, bonus points, dinner's on me for this person over here. How many know somebody, a friend or a family member, that's been a student at Southwest Tech? Yeah, many more hands go up. That's where we found that our economic impact is the greatest. It's hard to find someone in Grant County that doesn't know somebody that has had their lives benefited by attending at Southwest Tech. And if you haven't been on campus in a while, we would love to host tours, anyone, everyone, to show you what we've been working on and what we're accomplishing. We constantly do remodels to keep our spaces new and relevant. One of those? There, I had to turn it on.
Yep.
Thank you. So as I spoke today, there's our agenda. We're going to go through that. Southwest Tech's economic impact in our region every year is $159.3 million. That's the value we bring, or roughly 3% of the GDP. Almost 3,000 jobs are present in Southwest Wisconsin because of Southwest Tech offering the programs and courses that we do. So one out of every 24 jobs in Southwest Wisconsin is directly related to the college being here. We do have a major emphasis in the healthcare world. Everyone's familiar with our nursing program. We also have a physical therapy assistant program, certified nurses assistant. We have the only publicly accredited midwifery program in the country, and that serves a population here in Southwest Wisconsin as well, primarily the Amish. Okay, Bree?
Okay. So I think we missed... Question one was answered on that last slide, 2,996 jobs supported. The next slide is another... The answer to question two. So did you know the percentage of Southwest Tech graduates who are employed in our district following graduation was 54% in 2018, 55% in 2017, and 64% in 2016? And the source of this information is our graduate follow-up surveys that we conduct every year, six months after graduation.
Excellent, and just a note on that, over 95% of our students get jobs within a few months of graduation, and we're doing our surveys right now of our current students that are scheduled to graduate in May, and there are at least four academic programs that 100% of the students in those programs currently have jobs before they even graduate. We're very proud of that. Little bit small to see up there, but from the student perspective, they bring in $102 million to our overall economic impact. From a taxpayer's perspective, we save close to over $35 million for the taxpayers, which is primarily seen in the benefit and cost that's associated with investing in Southwest Tech. We're state-funded. We appreciate those state funds, that the legislature invests in us, and we think we're a good return on that investment, at almost 5% return on the state investment. And then from a social perspective, those are all of the things that contribute to that overall value. We have another, do you know?
All right, so the answer to question number three. Over a working lifetime, the benefits of a Southwest Tech associate's degree, so two-year degree, over a high school diploma will amount to $327,600 in higher earnings per graduate. And so this is real impact to all of our graduates, right? That's money that's coming directly to them and their families because of their education they're receiving at Southwest Tech. And another one, question four. So the programs with the top three starting salaries or the median hourly wages for our Southwest Tech graduates are: one, nursing, so that's an associate's degree, starting at a reported $27.79 an hour; electrical power distribution is a one-year technical diploma, $24 an hour; and physical therapist assistant, which is an associate degree, $23 an hour. And so this information, again, comes from our graduate follow-up survey that we already talked about. And the interesting thing about these three programs and many of our other programs is, first of all, these are their starting salaries, right? So this is when they're right out of school. But a lot of those jobs have the opportunity for overtime, right? So it's not even taking into account the amount of money that they're making above and beyond that base pay.
So our operational spending impact, that's the direct expenditures that we have as a college, is right about $20 million a year. Then the additional students that we bring into the region spend another $3.5 million a year. And our alumni, which is the largest factor, spend $135 million a year in Southwest Wisconsin. I think one thing I did want to mention to this group was our building trade students, who have... They've been building a duplex or a single resident housing for many, many years. And right now, the last six or seven years, they've been building a duplex on campus that then our students live in. And so it's a really neat opportunity for our students to gain hands-on learning experience and build a residence hall where future Southwest Tech students are going to live. And we hope to partner with the city and the school district to help in their efforts with the school district looking to have their students build housing. We think we can get them college credits for that and benefit everyone. So our final invitation, lunch is on me for the gentleman that's a graduate, whenever you'd like to redeem that. Anyone else that wants to help? We have a recruiting imperative right now. Last year at this time, we were looking at 8% to 10% enrollment declines, which is a scary number. I'm very proud to report Bree's part of that success, Jen in admissions, and Bree is a recruiter. As we sit right now, we're at about 1% up. So we turned a deficit into a surplus in recruitment in six or eight months. And the people who hire our students are extremely grateful for that. So if you want to be on campus, let me know. We'd be happy to provide you and whoever you come with with a tour and a free lunch so that you can get to know what we're doing and how we're doing it. I just want to share briefly, since we're in Platteville, that we are opening up a new outreach site here in Platteville in the Ruxton... Ruxton? Ruxton Apartments, I keep forgetting that, across from Piggly Wiggly. We're very close to going to bid on the remodel. We anticipate that we'll have a ribbon cutting in June, and if that's on June 15th, then classes will start June 16th. We're going to be very aggressive in putting classes in place, and our target audience in Platteville are the adult ed population that is seeking a high school equivalency. We feel that we can get them into college, or get them through their GED and then have them transition into programming, which increases their earning potential. And then we also are working very diligently to bring more students from Southwest Tech to University of Wisconsin-Platteville. In fact, on Friday, I'm taking 15 to 20 of our students on a tour of UWP to help increase the number of students that are at Southwest Tech coming to UWP. We serve about a... We have about 100 students that transfer to the university every year, and I feel that with a minor investment on both the university and the college's behalf, we could double that number in short time, which would be of benefit to everyone in the region. So with that, I will cede the rest of my time, or stand for any questions that anyone may have.
Last question. How many... How much housing do you have on campus?
Oh, I didn't. I just glossed over that. We have 140 beds on campus for students.
Does that make Southwest Tech unusual as it relates to other technical colleges?
Yes, very perceptive, Barb. I believe we're the only technical college that has our own student residence. There, I know Western has some partnerships, and a few other colleges has partnerships, but as far as actively building, managing, and operating for our students, that is a unique element. Any other questions? If I'm allowed to open it up or not, I don't know, but...
Oh, yeah, you are.
I'll play by your rules.
So the largest program enrollments are in health sciences?
Correct. Nursing is our large... Nursing, agriculture, and business are our three highest enrolled programs, very popular historically, and they maintain strong enrollments now. I will just end on a bragging note that we were ranked by Forbes Magazine as the 13th best two-year college in the country, and we have sights on being the best in the country.
Brown, a Southwest Wisconsin.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We believe so too, and we think we can add value and help others as well, so...
Okay, only one group of people that you didn't ask about, and that's how many current and/or former Southwest Technical College board members
Sure.
are in the room.
How many board members do we have? I know there's Barb, and Eileen is current.
I think that's it.
Oh, okay. There was one that I didn't know.
I did want to recognize my fellow council people here
Very fair.
for their service to the college.
And both of them have made a tremendous impact, and Barb, as a former board member, continues to make a tremendous impact. We appreciate her influence. And yours as well.
I can tell you my story when Eileen's finished with hers. You have a story?
You have a story?
Have I what?
Do you have a story?
Have a story. A story? Yep. No, I... No. Actually, if I was going to ask anything, though, and I will say it's a pleasure to serve on this board, the Southwest Tech board. It's just incredible. I mean, there's always something going on, and there are so many wonderful stories, heartwarming stories, from the students themselves who find, if they're a first-generation student, let's say, and the support that they get on campus is just phenomenal. And we heard some success stories at the graduation. The families were just excited in the audience because that was maybe the first person in their family to graduate from college. And so it's very heartwarming to serve on this board. Just briefly, Jason, what excites me also is about the opportunity that high school students have
Sure.
earn college credits while they're in high school. So if you want to touch on that just a little bit?
Sure. We take great pride in working with our school districts and finding ways for currently enrolled high school students to earn college credits. We've actively grown that program in the last two years, and one of the partnerships with the school district here in town has been to offer a culinary and an early childcare program to high school students in the high school building. And we anticipate expanding those options and offerings. I don't think it's very well-known, but one that we have done historically very well is with alternative high school students that, for some reason, need to stop out, take a break, but come back. We help catch them up. Last year, I believe we served six Platteville students in that capacity, and every one of them graduated. So it's the full gamut of those earning college credits, whether they're for gen eds or for a specific program, to those who are struggling. We try and find a way to help and take great pride in that. We do get about 25% of the graduating classes in our service district. We serve 30 high schools, which is more than double the state average. So we do a good job of keeping our local students local.
Okay, my story. If you ever walk in the front door and you look to the left, my name is on that brass plaque. And the reason is, is we had one of our first referendums during my period of time to build a couple buildings, primarily agriculture. And that was a very exciting time, except for one thing. It was freezing cold, way below zero, when we made all the trips to all the high schools in anticipation of advertising for that referendum. So that was an exciting time.
It was, yep. And certainly a game changer for the history of Southwest Tech. We more than tripled our enrollments, specifically in areas that lead to some of the best jobs that you see up there, because it was also the Ag Auto Building and the Health Science Center that was part of that referendum. So very good. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to share our story. If there's ever anything I can do for you, or if you know someone, be happy to come and help and try and find solutions, so...
Thank you all for coming, and I think we all learned a lot. Okay, we'll move on in our agenda then to the fourth item, which is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you want separate discussion and action. We have council minutes from the 28th of January, payment of bills, the financial reports for Januaries, appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight, I am appointing Joey Shonover to the Board of Appeals for a three-year term ending 10/1/22. Licenses, one- and two-year operator licenses, those were detailed in your packet. There's a run-and-walk permit for St. Patty's 5K by High Vibe Fitness, which will be on Saturday, March 14th. And then the proclamation honoring the chamber director on her retirement. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve all items listed under the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And if you're new to the council meetings, if you want to comment during this time, there are little half-pieces of green paper on the back table, and you would fill one out. And I have one in front of me from Ben. UW-Platteville update.
Hello, Ben Belkey, 800 South Chestnut Street. So Vic right now is handing out the sports calendars from February out. I'm not sure if it goes past March, but those are... I think there are some scores up until today, but then you can see sports further out from there. Other than that, there's a couple of things that have been happening on our campus. Provost candidate, another one came today. There's another one coming Thursday. We've had a lot of feedback from the university. We've had a lot of people involved in that, so that's been really great. Also, you've probably... Maybe, whether you know it or not, they've been around the city, obviously, so you might have seen a couple of them. So we have two more, or one more, left to go through. And then the next one, there's a couple of events that are happening on our campus, but the next closest one that's available is Ebony Weekend, and that is February 21st to the 22nd. You can sign up online. Community members, students, anybody is welcome to come to that. It'll be a really good event. It's about movements, not just civil rights movements, but LGBTQ movements, women's movements, things like that. So that'll be a really good event going on. Our BSU is putting that on, so that'll be really great. And then the last thing I'll talk about is, we finally have a name for our Get Out to Vote event, Platteville's Choice 2020. This will be happening March 10th from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Well, there's... We're still going through kind of the final plans for it, but the goal is to have lectures relating to certain topics. So one about agriculture, one about STEM, one about education, and then there's another one, and then also higher education as a whole, and why voting within those areas is so important, and how it affects. So we'll have panels, but then we'll also have an expo style that's happening right outside of some of those lectures, where we'll have people there explaining the process and getting people registered to vote. So that'll be our big register-to-vote push, especially since that's a month out straight from Wisconsin's voting. And I believe it's right before Minnesota's as well, so I'm getting a lot of our students registered to vote. And other than that, if you see me on my phone, I'm watching the primary the primary results following in, so I'm not paying... Not paying attention, but I'm a political science student, so I love watching those, so... So forgive me. Are there any questions?
And you talked earlier about an inclusivity conference. Do you know when that is?
Yep. So the registration for that has closed, and I believe it is the end of the month, so I believe it's the 27th and 28th. Correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Friday.
Yep.
And then Monday is the Restorative Justice Conference.
Yep.
And that registration is still open, and we finally got the online registration link. So contacting Amy Lancaster in the CJ Department. Served.
Yep. All right.
Any questions, Ben?
Well, thank you.
All righty. Move on to the next item on the agenda, which are reports. Board commission and committee minutes from two committees, the Police and Fire Commission. Robin?
Nothing... Well, say, we're happy to have, I think, a pool of candidates for future hires, so... Otherwise, nothing else to add.
Okay. The Housing Authority Board, Ken?
No addition to that report.
Okay. The other reports in the packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report, the Airport Financial Report, and Department Progress Reports. Anybody with any questions, comments, or follow-up on those? Otherwise, I would say there were a couple of things I saw in that. Please remember, the Sunday afternoon, I believe they're at 5:00 PM programs, the lyceum programs that the museum is sponsoring. I believe all of the ones that remain are here in this building, so please do that. I also believe, and I put on my calendar, the Pancake Breakfast Fire Department, which is... Ryan, on? I would have to look up my calendar. I think it's April 5th.
Yeah, April 5th, from 7:00 to 12:30 up at the high school.
That'll be the Pancake Breakfast. And then I saw that for future, that the Police Department noted their second open house, which I believe is May 13th. Okay, well, we have plenty of time for that one, May. So just make sure that, as you read those Department Progress Reports, you calendar those items that are important. All right, we'll move on to our single action item tonight, which is Resolution 2002, creating the Solid Waste and Recycle Committee. And Howard?
Yes. Back in October, the Common Council passed a motion to establish a Solid Waste and Recycling Committee to propose cost-effective alternatives for the Common Council to incorporate into future solid waste and recycling contracts. And so in accordance with that, staff is recommending that the council pass the enclosed Resolution 20-02 to establish the commission, or the committee, and it will expire December 31st of this year. We're recommending that it be composed of five members, one being a common council representative, and the others being citizens representing single-family owner-occupied households, landlords of single-family and duplexes, and renters of either single-family or duplex households. I would be the staff liaison, and we would have a representative of Farady incorporated as another non-voting technical expert.
Okay, folks, I was not here for the discussion on this item. Are there any... Is there any unanswered questions that anyone has? Not, then I would be looking for a motion.
I move to approve Resolutions 20-02, the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second, I believe, by Barb to approve Resolution 20-02. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Okay, as we will like to get this committee going sooner rather than later, if there is a common council member, since this will shall include at least one member of the council, if there is a representative here, a council member, who has a desire to be on this committee, please let me know, because maybe you have a particular interest in this area. And so let me know. And if you have suggestions for any of the other citizen members, again, I would be very... That would be very helping this committee organized and staffed. All right, let's move on to our information items then. So we... Sorry.
Bring on the...
We've been talking about this a long time at the Plan Commission. Now we have amendments to Chapter 6, Animals. Joe?
So this came about... It hasn't been a year yet. I did figure that out. So if any of you recall, last spring, we had a request for a kennel license in a residential area. And as we were going through that process, I think we realized quickly that some of our ordinances needed some attention. They were a little out of date and didn't address some of the some of the issues that came about through that process. So after we got through that particular request, we decided it was time to take a look at some of our other regulations that regulated animals in the city. So primarily, that's contained within Chapter 6. So we have been working diligently with the Plan Commission. We did take a little time off over the holidays, but we did go through it literally page by page to look at the regulations, see what was missing, how we needed to make some modifications to better address some of the issues that have come up in the past or that we kind of anticipate might come up in the future. So this is an entire, basically, revision of that ordinance. Like I said, we did look at each chapter. Some of them we didn't... Or each section of that chapter, we didn't modify all of them, but we at least looked through all of it. The changes are highlighted in the draft that's in front of you, so hopefully you can understand what the changes that we're considering. But there were some focuses on a particular areas that we're looking at making some changes. 6.03 animal abuse and abandonment, 6.04 keeping of poultry and fowl, primarily chickens. And we do have some regulations regarding that in the city now, but they're very brief. So a lot of items that weren't addressed, so we expanded that. Keeping exotic and farm animals, and again, part of that was already in our ordinance, but there was a gap in there, and that actually came about as a suggestion from our city attorney that had experienced some issues in some other communities that he worked with and said, "If you're going through this, you better tackle it now, because it will come up eventually." So now was the time to look at that. Animal establishment licenses, and that's where we get into the kennels and grooming establishments, which was really the driving issue to start with. which was really the driving issue to start with. Keeping of Rabbits, which really wasn't addressed at all, and then some definitions to provide some additional information on the regulations. So it is very lengthy, a lot of changes that I, that are proposed. So we're kind of anticipating that this might be a couple of work session, or not work session, but information meetings. So at this point, we're just kind of saying, please take a look at this, familiarize yourself with the code and what we're proposing to change. We will discuss it in more detail, hopefully, next meeting. And we're not really anticipating a vote at the next meeting, so we have some time to, to go through this in detail. And we'll, we'll schedule an actual vote when the council's ready for it, so.
And the last thing you added were definitions that hadn't been
Right. That was part of it, where it just, there was a lot of gaps in the actual information in the code, so we tried to beef it up a little bit.
This took the Plan Commission several months to get through. And so it was the recommendation then from the Plan Commission that this be put on for information and discussion tonight, and at least the next meeting, so that you have time to take a look. It's very detailed. It's hard to read through all of these pages at once. And sometimes you have to think about it a little, and, and think about what might have been missed, or what didn't, you know. So it'll be on for information, just information again next time. I don't know that we'll do anything except, say, does anybody have any updates they want to do? And in the meantime, I would suggest that if you have questions, or you have suggestions, or you believe that there are omissions, or perhaps inclusions that need to be adjusted, that you talk to Joe in the off, in his office about that. And if anybody has any immediate questions, I'm sure that when you got your packet, this was the first thing you read, and that you've kept it close by ever since, reading it. Particularly the part that says, it's not legal anymore to have elephants and hippopotamuses and rhinoceroses in Plattville. That's my favorite part.
Can I ask, which section did, did our city attorney question?
He didn't, he didn't question.
He didn't question. He specifically suggested we look at the exotic animal, because I don't, he, he didn't say which communities. He works for other communities. He said it has been an issue in other communities, so he suggested we put it in there, whether we think we need it or not, because we probably will at some point.
For instance, it says in this, on page 12, it notes that "No person shall keep, maintain, or have within this city any wild or exotic, exotic animals, which shall include the following: non-human primates, like monkeys, or chimpanzees, or similar." And so I'm assuming that there are probably places, in fact, my husband talks about when he was a student at UW-Plattville, one of the students on his residence hall wing had a monkey in the residence hall. So it's not out of the question that people might keep these things.
I am happy to know, though, you can have one pot-bellied pig.
Yep, one.
Because I know there was a student who had a pot-bellied pig, and I would see her walking in, so.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay, any immediate questions? Otherwise, like I said, it'll be on for information and discussion again next time. And it would, if it's the consent of the council, at that point, we would move it to action for the first meeting in March, rather than for the second meeting in February. Simultaneous to this now, we're going to look at some zoning issues as it relates to animals. Is that correct?
Right, so, so where this started was, like I mentioned, the conditional use permit for a kennel license. So we wanted to, we got sidetracked on that issue with the animal control, so now we got to go back to conditional use permits in particular. Where do we want kennels, what districts, and so forth. They're, they're kind of working in parallel, but we had to tackle one before we could get to the other.
That's the next item on the Plan Commission's agenda. Okay, I don't hear anybody talking further about this animal ordinance, amendments to Chapter 6 of Animals. So let's then go on to resolution to terminate Tax Increment Financing District Number 4. And I believe, Nicola, this is yours.
Yes. So the City of Plattville has currently four tax incremental financing districts, or TIF districts. TIF District Number 4, which is in the industry park, was created under the provisions of Wisconsin Statute, Section 6646. And it allows a municipality to recover development and improvement costs in the designated area from the property taxes generated by all of the taxing jurisdictions in, in the taxing district. The statutes allow a municipality to collect those increments until the net project cost has been fully recovered, or until 23 years after the creation date of the TID, whichever occurs first. And the net project costs for TID 4 have been fully recovered as of 2019. But we did approve an extension of TID 4 by one year under the Affordable Housing Extension Resolution back in October of last year. So that extension allows the additional year of tax increment to be used to improve the city's housing stock and benefit affordable housing. But now, we are in 2020, we are needing to go through the process of closing the TID. And under state statutes, a final audit must be conducted within 12 months of the TID termination. And any excess funds remaining in the TID at that point must be distributed to the taxing jurisdictions based on their portion of the total tax rate. So this resolution that is presented is to formally have the council approve the termination of TID District Number 4. And it's estimated that the remaining fund balance that will be distributed will be approximately $15,000 to $20,000.
And that money is in addition to and does not include the 217, or whatever it was, that was dedicated to
The Affordable Housing Program. So that is estimated at $236,000 that will be available for the housing program. And, and the remaining fund balance is a different part. And we cannot use the remaining fund balance that's in the TID to increase the affordable housing part. Those are two separate things, and the Department of Revenue does not allow that. So any funds remaining after the final year of expenses will be distributed to the, to the, the other jurisdictions. But it will not include any of that Affordable Housing Extension money. That's separate.
How much is the Affordable Housing Extension money? I thought it was $180,000.
So originally, when we estimated how much it would be, we, we, we thought it would be a little bit more than the 2019 tax increment. But in actual fact, we saw some growth in the value of the TID between 2019 and 2020. So we benefited from that in that the amount of increment grew as well. So the, the last increment, the 2020 increment, is 236,000.
Yes, so I understand that. I, and I've tried to find where I read this, but this week in the legislative report from the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, I believe I read that there's an effort underway to allow up to three years of a closed TIF. That's a proposal. So my question is, how soon does this, if we, if we would do this now, does that close that door? Or is that door already closed on this TIF? Because I would hate to pass this resolution at the next meeting.
I think it's a very interesting question.
In March, they passed this legislation that says you could have had three years of increment, which would take our 200,000 to 600,000 for affordable housing, and make a significant difference in what we could actually accomplish.
So I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this. I think it's an excellent point. Definitely, we would want to investigate. There is a deadline by which we do need to pass this resolution. So I'll work with the DOR and, and see what our options are.
What's the deadline?
I believe it's April 15th.
April 15th.
Okay, so we do have a little time.
We have a little time to, to get this accomplished. And so we'll, we'll bring back an, either if we have no option for potential additional extension, we could bring this back for action, or we'll definitely bring back an update either way.
Of course, that's just, that's just an, an idea right now.
Right.
I don't know if it's an idea that has traction, or if it's simply an idea. But I did read that. We'll find out. All right, anybody else with questions on the TIF termination resolution? Pending any additional information that we might be able to get. Okay, the third item on our information and discussion is Park Shelter Event Center Policy Changes. And Adam, I think you're taking this one.
That is correct, yeah. So pretty much this is kind of just an operational change and information item that I wanted to bring in front of you guys. Obviously, with the construction of the Legion Park Event Center underway, and our staff now kind of getting questions in regards to reservations, there's really been kind of two big ones that we continue to get as staff. And it's basically whether a group or event running the facility can stay past normal park closing hours, and then whether a group or event can make a reservation beyond 12 months. So currently, pretty much what we've done is, within the ordinance, it basically says park hours are listed as 5:00 AM to 10:30 PM. By precedent, what the city has done in the past is approved extended hours in conjunction with shelter permits by taking those requests before it's the Park Forestry and Recreation Committee. Well, that kind of creates a little bit of a problem here, because i- if we continue to do that precedent, if you can't get a quorum, we're not going to be able to approve those exceptions. So we kind of looked into the staff at what made the most sense. The other concern we had is with a lot of reservations, if we continue with the current precedent, that means we're having to have special board meetings in order to have that approved. So we kind of looked into some options of what made the most sense, kind of looking into what the current ordinance says and what the policy is. So based on those factors, in talking with our Park and Rec Department, they're seeking a policy in which they can extend the hours without taking the requests before the committee. The current ordinance does allow for the extension of hours if it's approved by permit, license, or conjunction with an approved Recreation Department activity. Therefore, the, you know, I'm proposing that the Park and Recreation Director, their designee, would be able to approve all extension requests until 12:00 AM midnight on the date of a rental. Basically, what we're going to do at the time of that rental, they are going to be notified, that they'll be reminded that at 10:30 PM, they have to turn the music down. Obviously, it can't be any longer if they're going to be extending it. That's kind of the conjunction we're going to have. The second request basically is that currently, we take reservations up to 12, 12 months in advance to accommodate events which require more planning. We're basically proposing extending this to 24 months for just the event center. So our basically normal shelters would still be the 12-month policy, but they could request to have the event, you know, the event center itself extended to 24 months in advance. Really, the budget impact on this is, is kind of hard to say. If you look at, you know, the overall thought process, it should be more in the, you know, we should receive more revenue out of this, because obviously, we're not, you know, creating a delay or potential in reservations. So that's the hope behind creating, kind of making this change, is that it's going to allow for us to have more of a streamlined process, and really kind of create any, you know, hindrance from people not being able to book, whether it's a wedding, or whatever type of event. So pretty much the recommendation that, that I made is that I'm going to authorize the Park and Rec Director, after talking with council leadership about this, we're going to authorize the Park and Rec Director, their designated, to be able to approve all park hours extended requests until 12:00 AM midnight, with basically the caveat that they have to let those, those groups know that after 10:30, they have to turn the music down. And then also, we'll be authorizing staff to accept reservations for 24 months in advance for groups or events wishing to rent the Legion Park Event Center. And then all park renter reservations will kind of be the same. It'll be that 12 months.
Have exceptions built into this, like 4th of July and Dairy Days in this whole policy?
Barb, I think what, I think that that has been approved before.
Yes.
So the extension has been approved. I don't know about the music part and, and the car, you know. The, the noise part comes in a different ordinance.
That's a different part of the ordinance, correct. So they're two separate. You've got the park hours are in a certain part, and then the actual noise part is under 41.02, has Section 2, which says loud and unnecessary noise is prohibited. No person shall make or cause to be made any loud sounds or noises which tend to, nor disturb another person or private place.
And, and that's, that's not restricted to parks?
No.
That's a city, that's a city-wide
Yes.
noise thing. So I think in terms of the 4th of July and Dairy Days, I'm quite sure that, that we have had truck pulls, and perhaps tractor pulls that extend beyond 10:30 in the evening, and probably make a bit more noise than
Yeah, typically, typically, it's a conversation where obviously, if it goes to the Parks Committee, they're aware of it. They let our police department know in our staff meetings. We kind of talk about it. And that way, everybody's kind of on the same page. So if there are complaints that come in, they then let that person know. There's, we understand, we know it's a noise. They still keep it in check to obviously make sure if it's loud, they will go out there. But otherwise, you, you know, the staff is pretty well, you know, communication-wise, the stream is there for everybody to know what's going on.
And frankly, those are big public events.
Yes.
People know they're going on because they've been advertised and stuff. This would, this, this would allow a event to continue till midnight, but that event is a private event, and those people would need to comply with the not-so-much-noise-after-10:30
Yep.
activity. Yeah, so they couldn't like, all of a sudden, have fireworks at 11:45 or something.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not to be a sticker, but the statement 12:00 AM midnight on the date of rental is not probably
Oh.
Yeah, that would be the next date, wouldn't it?
Well, it'd be the morning of, before the event.
What about cleanup? Or is that in here?
Well, this, this is basically about taking reservations at least 20, up to 24 months in advance.
Right.
And about not having to be done by 10:30.
Yeah, the cleanup would still be in the overall policy, the original con, yeah, agreement that they would have to sign.
But I, I think the question would be, is, does the event have to be done at like 11:00 to allow for cleanup? Or are they allowed to be on the premise after midnight?
If they're given, if it's till midnight, then essentially, they have till midnight, based on the agreement that the Park and Rec Director would allow. So that's, that would be part of the extension, is they would have to understand that, yeah, at midnight, they basically are shutting down.
Other questions? Then if there are no other questions, it appears that we may have one additional action item on our agenda tonight.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to adjourn. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, and thank you all for attending the work sessions.